Thank you all for coming. I appreciate taking a little bit of your life and meeting your neighbors, talking with your neighbors, and seeing what's happening in my home as far as some of the serious things that need to be discussed and brought to people's attention. If you've looked at it, you can see this is the borough building with the renovations done to it. And to the right is the Willis Center with the floor plan over there. So briefly, I'll just go over some of this stuff with you as the plans to the Borough Building. So if you look at the gray, the gray area is all the existing building. The areas darker gray are additions. And we asked the architect to put symmetrical additions onto the Borough Building for aesthetics and appearance. So to the left is the police station, to the right is the fire company. And if you look at the drawings there, the fire company's here. The architect has moved the council chambers from upstairs to downstairs in the first level of the original fire company. To the left side of the police here, this has all been made into office space for the police station. Okay? If you look further to the second or third drawing over there, there's a basement diagram where the basement has been drawn up. Certainly come up and look at it. The basement is... The basement plan, I'm sharing this quickly. The basement plan entails parking in the police station side and a salary board so they can bring a police car in and detain a prisoner and bring the prisoner out in a locked confined area. Okay, that's really all that is. It also entails locker rooms, bathrooms. It also entails a workout room, I believe gymnasium, a fitness room they call it, evidence rooms. And all these stuff, a lot of it is great to have and we need it. This red entails the fire department down below and that really is staying the way it is. I'm looking at the drawings and I'm not real sure about this, but it looks to me like they renovated the bathrooms down in the basement there as well in their plans. I'm not real sure about that, but I think that's what it shows to me. So, you know, the cost of all this entails roughly fifteen million dollars that I was told to meet. Which I think is quite a bit. This is the first floor here, this shows the council chambers and fire hall. They flip-flop every office here. I don't know that this all really needs to be done in this manner. You know, it takes moving every room, basically. And what it is now, I'm moving everything. And that costs money to do. This is the proposed second floor. And in this proposed addition of the building, the second floor is where the administrative office will be. So... This is the administrator's office over here, code enforcement. I just don't think, I think the first thing that you should see when you come in your municipal building is your administrative office. You shouldn't be going up to your second floor. So I don't disagree, I don't say this is a bad plan. It's a costly plan. It's moving everything from where it is to one place to another. So does the code enforcement need such a big room? I question that. You know, there's a lot in here, you need to really look at all this stuff. Hoteling, they have hoteling, they have another elevator that's brought in. I like the idea of having another elevator in the building that will go all the way to the basement level and come all the way up to this level as well. It's a great plan, but it's fifteen million dollars in this architect's plan. So I don't know that we can afford it, to be honest with you. So my thought was, okay, let's look at his plan, let's look at, you know, maybe what we can take from his plan and then use what he's talked about and do a supplemental plan to it. So looking at this, this is just the outside of the property showing just a little bit of site work, you know, trees, whatnot, how the proposed area would look. So it's a confined area, there's no doubt about that. Parking could be brought into the front of the building as well. There's a lot of things that could be changed and worked on. And everyone is entitled to their opinion. But I certainly think if we scaled down what this proposal is, we could possibly keep our Borough. Do we need to have as much detail and as much room up here as we have? I don't know, I question that. You know, the men's locker room, we have a men's locker room, we have a fitness room. I don't think we need a fitness room. I think we give the police officers and per se what they're gonna do for the public works as well, they're gonna use it. Give them a membership to one of the fitness clubs, they're seven dollars a month. They don't need to pay, they don't need to have all this facilities. They're not gonna go here, I don't believe they're gonna go here and use it. If I was a police officer, I would go somewhere else where no one knew me. I could go work out and enjoy myself. I'm not worried about, you know, certainly staying after work, working in the basement, working in the basement of the Borough. I think those days are gone, to be honest with you. We have a ladies' room here that has four, about four commodes in there, four sinks, shower, four changing rooms. We have one woman police officer. This isn't a police car.
Today.
Today. Today, the guy knows planning for the future.
But those things aren't based on the number of actual people working there. They're based on the codes that are in there that require the number of features for the occupancy of the building.
I understand, I'm a plumber, so I know a lot of occupancies. We have one woman.
Right, it's based on the number of, it's not a specific gender or people.
This is not open to the public. This is all, this is not open here.
I understand.
So, to that point, two toilets would be suffice versus four.
Not if that's what the codes require. I'm an architect, so I understand why they're doing what they're doing based on the square footage and the usage of the building, not necessarily the way to move the people are.
Well, I understand, and he brings up a good point, there's only two bathrooms, two commodes in here for the men. So that's not the issue. We're not, I'm not, we're not here to depict this drawing, we're not here to depict every little issue. Although I think it is an issue. And there are codes, and I understand all of those, because we could do that. My point is, we can't afford fifteen million dollars to do it for this addition. And I question if we can afford five million dollars to do that addition, that building. That's my, that's the real question here. And then it becomes, what can we do if we don't choose to do this? Which obviously at this point, I think it's a moot point because the Borough Council has voted to move to the Willis Center. So I want to be, what they, what should have happened here is council should be here first showing this all to people and asking for input and then they can take a vote on it and think about it. That didn't happen. What happened was, they got this number and they voted on it. And at that point in time, before they voted on it, discussion should have been had with the people. So that's why I'm showing you all what's going on here. I'm sorry if I'm standing in the way over here for you all. So, that being said, I think that kind of, just to make a point here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one toilets in the basement level. That's a little much. Okay? That's not including the one, two, three, four, the five toilets for the cell. That's just for people that think it's a little much. And if we wanna sit down and have an architect plumber discussion, we can do that later. Okay? The elevator, the added elevator, I think is great. I don't know how much an elevator costs, to be honest with you. Yeah, so, you know, I just wanted to bring, I want the people to be aware of what was given to us and what the pricing was. You know, I think this could be scaled down, is my point, and used, you know, in a different manner. You know, do we even have any of this done here? This, if we don't excavate down here and then we go into the Borough Building on this level here. Looking for the front part of the building. And there's countless things that could be done. But my thought was that we put garage space here and have entrance right from West Street to here. And this could be made offices. And the original garage that was there, that could be made into offices. And then we have the basement level down there, it's really not being used to a specific advantage. Could be renovated and done, made into more office space as well downstairs. And key things to do in this renovation would be central air conditioning, ventilation for new building to be brought in here. That would be critical because that's one thing that is lacking, is ventilation systems and cleanliness and painting. You know, I've been there for about six years now, I've never seen a paintbrush in the neighborhood. So, I mean, cleanliness is next to godliness. You know, and moving bathrooms from one place to another is costly. You know, if we stuck with the basic design of what we have, I think it would go a long way, impossible. Okay? So, any questions on the Borough Building that I can answer? I'm not, I don't profess to be an expert, so go ahead.
Were there any specs given to the architect, the Borough wanted, or was he given a blank?
He was given, basically, he wasn't given a blank. He walked and talked to all the departments and asked them what they wanted.
Like a wish list.
Exactly. And initially, I was not part of that question. But I did talk with him and, you know, I wanted him to look at maybe putting two additions on. Just for symmetry, to try to add to the fire company as well, to give them something newer there. But at a cost of fifteen million dollars, I think you have to say, wait a minute, let's step back. So there wasn't really, per se, how do you wanna put it, a punch list that they wanted. But they asked him, they went through and asked what they could do, what they would like, like you say, a wish list.
Don't they usually go out and read his on something that's costly?
Well...
You can't just take one guy's bid on it, it's costly.
Well, that's something that I have spoken about, that we should have gotten several architects to talk to. And this is just one person's rendition of what can be done to this building. Not, not, not more than one, this is one company, one engineer who designed this. And, you know, engineers are thorough people, architects are thorough people, that's what they do. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the design that we want or we can afford. You know, it's great to design the tolerance hall, but if you can't afford it, then, you know, let's look at something that's more tangible, that can be attained. Anyone else with a run?
How many offices are currently in the Borough Building? How many offices?
Well, there's the manager's office, there's the secretary's offices too. There's the mayor's office, there's the tax collector's office, that's four. There's the detective offices, that's five. There's the general police station, which we'll call six. There's the sergeant's office, which will be seven. There's the captain's office, which will be eight. There's the chief of police, which will be nine. Then we go upstairs, we have the store quarters, which will be ten. We have the building inspectors, which will be eleven. We have the fire company up there, which will be twelve. That would be the offices, so...
Now, how much did the Borough have to pay this architect for the plans? I'm sure they didn't do it for not...
I think this, the, I'm not sure about this one. I think the Borough paid about thirty thousand or twenty-seven thousand for the Willis Center. This, I think, was probably comparable, I'm not sure.
About the same.
Fifty-four thousand dollars that, you know, everybody's gonna wish with them. Well, you know, they come to me and they say, we can have your house remodel. And I say, oh yeah, my wishes to have that and this and that. But look at our garden. I mean, you know, we're not Ethel Park, we're not Upper Saint Pierre. We're not, we don't, we're not rolling in money.
I understand.
And I think the council, you know, they want their paycheck, they wanna eat it too. And I think it's time that they made you realize, you know, hey, you're working for the people.
I'm working for the people as well. They're served. Basically. What was done with this design is all of the existing areas were not taken into consideration for revamping, remodeling, and maybe reutilization for different spaces. The place is gutted and completely revamped inside, which was completely unnecessary. The additions are wonderful, but there's also, you know, there's ways to utilize part of those additions also that weren't taken into consideration. There's obviously gonna need a roof, that's gonna be a million dollars. That's gonna have to happen in that building and Willis building. They all need done, but... The roof cost was not a million dollars, okay? But it does need a new roof. And the roof was not replaced, was replaced not long ago, within maybe ten or fifteen years ago. So there's a rubber roof up there, I was up there and the architect was on the roof and we looked at it and there are some issues with the roof. So that just... Let me go back to the basement plan. The basement plan, which I have a problem with. Now, a lot of the cost, I mean, it's all costly everywhere you go. So, the cost of... The first thing that they looked at was leveling the whole basement from here over to make it all one level. And that entails breaking up all the floor of the base of the Borough Building, lowering it about three and a half to four feet, okay? And then putting interior French drains in and their proposed exterior French drains as well. I believe this is the front of the building. And the front, they're saying, is where they would excavate and do an exterior French drain. If you look inside the Borough Building, there's a section down there where the wall was just peeling with water damage and it's been that way for as long as I've been there. And I believe it's clearly a roof leak that's leaking down into there. I think with attending to that, and if you need to put an interior French drain in there, you don't have to actually excavate three and a half, four feet to make everything one level. You know, I think that's ridiculous as far as I'm concerned. People can still walk up and down in flight steps, three flights of steps. And, you know, and furthermore, for the police station alone, there's one section of the police station where they have a room in there for the police officers. I think there's twenty-four, twenty-three desks in there. We don't need twenty-three desks in there. The police officers should be in their cars out there. They don't need to have a separate desk for each one. We don't need to have four desks for sergeants. Sergeants should chair desks, not one sergeant, one duty at a time. So there's a lot of things that could be scaled down, all through the building, everywhere, that would make it a little bit more feasible, that's all. And it has to be brought up in discussion, it just can't just be voted on. Let's just do that because this is too, this is too hard, it's impossible.
Has anyone looked into whether a referendum can be added to the ballot so that the taxpayers get a say in either...
I did look into a referendum. I called the election bureau, I talked to several attorneys about it, and they told me that it could not be put on a referendum. So no, you could not do that, so that's about it.
So the proposed renovation that you're talking about is not on the city council pick? The council picked this one?
Correct.
Okay, that's on, okay.
Right. So I'm gonna go over what their proposal was here, then I'm gonna bring the Willis Center. We can look at that as well. The Willis Center is a very large building and has been city vacant for about eighteen years, fifteen years, somewhere in that ballpark figure. Couple of things that are going on with that building and this building, there is asbestos in both buildings. So asbestos would have to be removed. They gave us a quote of about a half a million dollars somewhere to remove the asbestos in the Willis Center. They told us there was about the same amount of money, about the same amount of asbestos in this building. But they didn't give us a real quote, a real number. And I have the asbestos report, it's here somewhere, I've read it. It's very hard to read if you're not really an engineer or someone, there it is right there. I don't know truly apples to apples if that's true or not. But they did give us a number, they said it's about the same. So that's not an answer as far as I'm concerned. When you're looking at this stuff, people would like to know the number, how much is that? And I know it was about, about five hundred thousand, I believe. I could be off a little bit. So, and my point in showing this to the people tonight is I still feel that if we kept our Borough Building, we could do this on a scale, not one shot, let's do it all at one time. You know, this proposal is gonna take eighteen months to do. They're gonna have to demo the whole basement, you know, there's gonna be demolition. They're gonna have to be removed out of the building. And that makes it hard to do as well. It's much easier to do that building where you're still here and you could move into that. And just to throw it out there, you know, these are all great in there, that's all beautiful designs. But if you listen to the architect when he was there last week, was it last week? He said Forest Hills built a brand new municipal building for four million dollars. I think it was three and a half million dollars, I don't know, someone say three million, grand? I think it was around four million. So... Anyone else, if anyone else wants to talk about this Borough Building here, you certainly come up and watch. Here's the asbestos, we'll survey this building.
Now, they go in to go and clean the Willis Center. What is gonna do with the Borough Building? It's gonna sink empty and flat on the surface.
Well, I brought that, I brought the question up about the fire department. The fire department at this point in time is trying to stay there, so they're gonna have to keep that. Fire company there and... So that means we're gonna have to maintain, go to the beaten building. So, break it, I'll move over to this side. We'll talk about the...
I have a question, I like, I understand it. So TK architects would have put on both sides.
They were.
Two designs.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the Borough itself, around thirty K was used right there. They brought in to survey the departments within the Borough.
They did.
With the design.
Correct.
So this design that's on the table of both sides itself, with the cost we have here are estimates.
Correct.
Okay, so there has been no bid, none, out of any construction for it at this point?
There's no formal bid been designed or put out. And that would be, I'm sure, a much added cost to do for the architect. I mean, if you're an architect or engineer, you'll just sit down and you'll design all the specifications for the build-out so that will be, that's not done yet, I would imagine. I'm not privy if it has, but I don't think it has.
There'd be a real beneficial cost.
Sure.
Run the project.
Oh, absolutely.
Do the bid.
Right.
Run the project.
Correct.
Do the ad build plans to do the complete build-outs themselves. And then you're gonna come back with something that may be for an excess of fifteen million or... I'm not sure what this runs over here.
Well, they're saying four to five million dollars, I believe. You know, and the number jumps around, it was four million, then I heard someone say five million, I'm unsure. So this is the front of the building. This is the actual front of the building, the Willis Center. And if you look at the building, I know it's far from to see, but the top floor is empty. The second, the third floor, we'll call it, is the entrance where the Borough sign is there. And there would be the tax office, if you look at the drawings, the tax office is there. And I think there's another office there, I'm not sure which one it is. And then you'll take the elevator downstairs to the general offices, which I brought that up at the council meeting, and they talked about possibly moving that. So they may, you know, the design is not set in stone, per se, I would say. So they may move the general offices up to that level. That's not set in stone yet, but as the drawings were presented, this is what was presented. So, you know, I'm sure there can always be changes. I think that, you know, my feeling is that when you drive up West Street, you're gonna drive right past the building, you're never gonna see it there. Where the building that we have now has prominence, it's the most prominent building in the town. So you can't pay for that. So, again, if you look at this building design, it's about fifteen thousand square feet, I believe, on one level. So it's a much bigger building. And the architect, when he presented this case for the municipal building that we have now, he stated that he tried to get everything that was in the Willis Center into that building. And that was his reasoning why he put that all into that, into that plan. And I understand that, that's why he did that. But I don't feel we need all of this space that we have in the Willis Center, in that building. You know, we can, we can use what we have. So all the windows are being replaced, the roof is also being replaced. And then if you look at, this is just the back section of the building where all the windows are, well, they're, they'll all be replaced. This here is the basement and the first floor, which is a little hard to tell, but go over very quickly with you. I do wanna go over some other things as well, what's going on and move onward. But this, I think, is sort of important so you all can know what's going on with the Borough, with the Willis Center. So the Willis Center... This is the administrative building here, this is the, we'll call it the second floor. This is the, we'll call it the second floor. The, the area over here is not underground per se. It's, it's quasi underground. There's a, a ramp you can come out right here from the, from the council chambers. Um, administrative offices are here. Um, you know, I just, I just don't think, I just don't like the layout of it myself. The mayor shouldn't be right here. The administrative offices should be right here in the main office. They should be upstairs actually. They shouldn't be downstairs. You'd have to get into an elevator or walk down a flight of steps to go into your municipal building. They should be up above. You know, again, you need to look at the fitness areas. I think we, we don't need all that. We don't need the fitness areas. You know, we don't have a fifty, fifty man police force. We have twenty, twenty-two officers. So, um, again, look at the floor plan, make your own decision. This is not my opinion. This is an informative meeting for you to see what's, what's, what's being offered. I certainly, um, I don't, I would choose the borough building myself, but I think it could, it needs to be chosen and done a little bit more differently than fifteen million dollars. Okay, anyone have questions about the Willis Center?
Well, just a question. So the council has already voted. What is our recourse for people who don't believe that was the right decision?
Call your councilman, write, write a letter to the office. Um, you know, I'm not here, but this is not a political meeting for me to say or, or, or me to instruct you what to do. Voting is your only recourse. Uh, you can't, you cannot get a referendum. I tried to find out about getting a referendum. They told me you can't do a referendum. So your only recourse is at the ballot box. That's your only recourse, honestly. So, um, you can, you can come to tomorrow's council meeting and push your opinion as well and say, hey, we're not for this. Why, why didn't you do this at ten o'clock at night without any announcements? Without, you know, without any discussion on, hey, maybe we can scale that down, uh, you know?
When did they pick the architect and the firm?
Well, the architect came in, we interviewed him, we walked out of the interview room, we walked into council chambers and they hired him. And I stood up and I said, guys, one, one interview, one guy?
Who owns the firm?
I want you to be the owner of the firm. But I think, I certainly felt that they should have interviewed ten architects and not, and then picked the best five and then interviewed those best five. But that process did not happen, sorry to say.
This building, if I remember from the original presentation, also has a bunch of space that's not, it's up for rent. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then the borough would be in a position of having tenants to be in it?
Correct. So this is the dock floor, which I thought I should mention that earlier. The top floor is empty and they, they'll do a soft, soft construction or something they call it. I'm not sure of the term, but they'll put bathrooms up there. They'll put bathrooms on the third, the third floor as well. And they'll put all the furnaces in and heat and, and basically this will all be left undone. This will all be left undone, except for the tax office, the store authority and whatever else is right in that air, general area. Now this public conference room here, I don't know what they're going to do there with that. That's, that was put in, you know, that was the area that when I mentioned the council meeting, that they said, well, maybe we can move the administrative offices here. Um, whether or not that happens or not, I don't know, but, but I don't think municipalities or boroughs should be in the rental business at all. You know, I, that's my opinion. West Smithland, take for example, they have that, they moved from their borough building. They moved to that big apartment, that, that big office space across from the county, county airport. They stayed in there for a while. They never filled the space up. They never got any tenants there. Then they moved to their new municipal building, which is a beautiful little municipal building. There's, there's no doubt that it's, that it's ideal, but it was, I think it was at Dravot or, or one of the big, big corporations. It was there and they left, they laid, they, they framed it all and did everything for them when they moved in. So it was, it was really a walk-in move for them. Alan?
Have we looked at where in Mon Hall where there's property to build a new police station and keep our borough building just as an administrative office?
I, I don't believe that's been done. And I would think it might go the other way. Why don't we build a new fire hall in the back of the property we have and take over the police station as, as a, as a fire hall? That would make more sense to me because the firemen, you know, they could build a new, brand new fire hall back there in the back and there's space right there to do that. That's not been discussed. They don't, you know, discussing things is not, not really happening.
Good. Um, I guess my big question about getting a huge building like that is what does the public care and cost to eat and have electric in a building of such huge size? Um, and itself, if you're asking to ask anybody about a big old house, I mean, that's crazy.
Well, I, I can tell you that the design of the, of the remodeling will be done in such a manner that, because I asked this question before. I said, you know, what about the walls, outside walls? You know, they're, they're a brick and top.
They need to pipe trees because the temperature is too low and then you have now underwater disaster.
I walked through the building. They had all kinds of heating on the outside of the walls. They had boiler heat and there were broken pipes all through them, just to say no. So I asked the architect and he said, oh no, we'll fire these walls out and insulate these exterior walls and they'll, there won't be any heat or any piping in there no, no longer. So they'll make everything more efficient. You know, they'll make everything to be standards that they have to, to come up to, to make it an efficient building, but you're still going to keep unheated space, which will be kept to probably a minimum. You know, they're not going to keep it to seventy degrees up there, but they may keep it at, you know, fifty-eight. I don't know.
Yeah, it just seems like in all of these plans, we forget one thing going back to like old school mentality is what's nice versus what's necessary. I mean, you know, old school, it still works.
This is not necessary.
We don't, I come down my road and bump, 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 I don't, my road's paved and, you know, there's so many other things that were elected in the borough and to say we need a gym. I, I, you know, please work higher than a lot of people. It's nice to even have that.
It is.
But it's not necessary.
So we toured West Smithland Police Company to Barrow and they have, they have an absolutely beautiful police department and everything that you can imagine, they have, like, like what they want. But do you really need that? And I brought that up. I said, I don't think we need to have workout room. You know, we could have a piece of equipment somewhere, but we don't have to have a designated, you know, twenty by thirty workout room. And I, I'll piggyback on that. So I ran some numbers just now. Uh, the average size of these offices are twenty by twenty. Twenty by twenty is from this quarter, this whole part of the building. I, that is just an absolute exuberant amount of space. Code enforcement is basically this whole side of this building. So we're going to run, you know, they're going to take this overly exacerbated fifteen million dollar thing and vote it now. Well, that's because there's probably some kind of tunnel vision that it was designed just to make it look horrible and have numbers go off the board. So you're, you're. You're talking about the, the. I'm going to talk about this completely unnecessary, overly elevated design plans that didn't need to happen. To make, to make that look better and to make this look overly expensive. We're looking at, um, borough manager, five hundred square feet. That's twenty-two point two-five feet. You don't need that much space, huh? Or you can put a couch and a bed and a lot of things in there.
They call that, they call that hoteling.
Okay, um, let's see. You know, captains, sergeants, they don't need, God bless the guys, I love them and they, you know, keep our community safe. They don't need a twenty by twenty area as an office. It's just like, it's completely unnecessary. There's multi-million dollar executives that don't have offices.
What's the size of their offices on that?
That's what I was going to get at right now. I mean, if you look at that drawing over there, the mayor has his own private bathroom. So I, I certainly might be that. It, it's hard to say. It's hard to tell the actual size here. If you'd like to look at it, you can maybe imagine it out. I'm sure there's a scale here. At one eighth equals one foot. So if you wanted, if you wanted to come up to scale that. It's smaller than our current grid.
So mayor? The council chambers where the public goes to speak and, and to, you know, be part of this process. Thirty-six by thirty?
If it's horribly designed plan, it's like thirty-six by thirty-six feet. That's probably smaller than our current grid.
Yes, that's crazy and that is a part of the problem.
And I just brought that up with this design as well when I looked at it. This design is, is not a good design for the council chamber. It's a little smaller. So the code enforcement algorithm in this building is twelve foot by ten foot. So it's much smaller than the other ones.
There's something, there's something to be said. I believe for government agencies, there is mandated space allocation based on your type of situation. You only have so many square feet. Some people like a receptionist or a clerk coming in six by eight feet. It's something to look into. I don't know, we don't work as architects in that. I believe, um, there are often industry states that are valid.
Standards are, are, well, that's, I'm sure there probably are standards and, and I'm on. Standards are ultimately, yeah, yeah. So. Again, any other questions?
Okay. No matter which draw, which plan is approved, you're filing it. Which one? Do we vote on paying for this or is it going to just automatically raise our taxes?
No, you don't vote for this. Council votes for this. So, and what they'll say, I don't know, but they're going to vote a bond. And I brought the bond papers I have from here that they applied for, which they told me, I didn't, they didn't apply for bonds, but they did apply for bonds and Rob. I even asked Rob, he said, Rob, did they apply for a bond? Rob didn't even know that they applied. He didn't know anything about it. So, so it will, they'll pay for it through a bond and council will have to vote on a bond as well. But I did bring the papers that they said that they didn't apply for. I have both of them there here tonight.
But council votes for the bond, that's not something that's votes one.
Council votes for the bond, but they have to have a hearing. And at that hearing, people can come up and talk and say, I'm against this bond. I'm against going into debt. And I tried to find out if I could have a, a referendum on the debt issue and I still think that might have been a possibility, but I'm not an attorney. So I would have to find out about it. That's, that's, that's another issue altogether, whether or not it could be put on a referendum. Maybe, maybe someone here might be an attorney, might be able to help us with that, answer a question, but I don't know.
Well, whatever taxpayer money's involved in any of these projects, that's going to end up at seven million. That ends up, time it's all said and done. Cost overruns and all the crap that goes on.
This, this, this project here, they're, they're, the, the cost of the parking lot is not involved because they're going to build another parking lot. And it's not a good design for parking as well because if you go there now, it's pretty full up there. We only have a certain amount of allotted spaces. So if, if per se, we have a council meeting here, they're going to have a parking lot up where the tower, water tower is. They're going to build a, so you're going to have to walk from that building, from that old water tower site to the building here. It's not, it's, it's not a good, it's not a good.
They want to see money in there.
It's not a good situation there, I believe. That's my opinion. Anyone else?
So Rick, so they have to vote for a bond.
Get money?
They do. I, the law says they do.
Right. So at this point, they have made a decision for this facility area.
Correct.
Okay, and the budget for this facility is? We don't know.
Five plus.
Five million dollars plus?
Plus, yeah.
Five billion dollars right there. So what do they plan to do with the existing facility?
Well, they, they don't, as far as I know, no one's come to me and told me that there's a plan to build a new fire company or a plan to do anything other than for the fire company to stay there until they make a decision.
Does the existing borough building have an historical status?
So not at this point, but that was brought up. Um, people have started looking into it prior, but I would love to see a group of citizens start looking into that.
Well, I meant more the fact right there that, you know, if you commit dollars, okay? So beyond the capital it takes and the bond funding to construct this building itself, you have the operating costs on both sides. You're going to have to pay operating on both facilities, the heating, the cooling, the water, the upkeep of it.
Right.
And, and I can see like you can go around to the churches in these areas and this area here where they've been abandoned or no longer used, buildings fail, okay? They don't, if you don't put money into them, they fail. You end up tearing them down, okay? I guess, so as far as bidding is concerned, okay? Are there requirements for a bid right there? They're going to put out a bid and what's the selection process? So does it go below a bidder? Because until you have set requirements, which all I've heard is there's a survey, okay?
Right, that's correct.
To, to an AD firm, which I'm assuming they have only architects and engineers do this design.
I believe.
And based upon that, they have an estimate.
Correct.
Okay.
It's an estimate.
For gross, you know, for gross number.
It's not a, it's not a bid number. It's an estimate from the engineering firm or the architectural firm who has engineers that work in the field that do this work and they're putting their name on it. That's what they're saying.
We've seen what's actually in it. Like example is you're not going to make a, you're not going to construct a new building without furniture, okay? You're not going to put up a new building without putting structured cabling into the building along with plumbing and heating and HVAC. You know, you need a communications network.
Absolutely. All that needs to be redone. In, in, in this building, it will totally be redone. In, in that municipal project that they have there, that would totally be redone.
Correct.
I'm not seeing a, a, a breakdown for the Willis Center. I don't believe I've seen, I have this.
So these building plans, they amount to public records and people can look at them?
They should be. I would think they should be.
And then as far as the rules of the local governments are concerned, for when any work is being done, okay? Is there a requirement to go out and bid with all the people to pick the lowest cost bid? Because if you do, it means that apartments, you can't have, this is just what I want. Somebody has a question.
It can't be apples and pears. It has to be apples and apples and apples and apples. All the same requirements, all the same bid. This is the job we want done. That's the job of the, to, to design the building and to design the bids.
It's a big package.
Right. So as far. Right, so, as far as I know, that's not been done yet, and that will entail a lot of work to do.
So the funding for that itself, along with the bond, fund the whole project, and the amount of dollars it takes for the architectural firm to finish the plans, okay? Come up with the requirements and everything, put out a master plan.
Right.
Go out and bid, that has not been done.
Not, as far as I know, no, it's not been done.
Can't get there between here and there, it must be at that point.
Right, so that needs to be all brought up and talked about as well, which I hope it will. So.
Has anybody at the council written, you know, a strategy behind this?
Well, I think there's a strategy behind this, indeed. I think that there is a very good strategy. And I don't think it's just for, it's just not for the borough building. I think that the West Field comes into play. I think that there's, that whole corridor is up for bids. I don't know where the ball's gonna bounce, but I think in Mon Hall's best interest, we need to retain our West Field. And I'm gonna be meeting with the school superintendent, and I'm gonna meet with Rob Fols, and I are both gonna be meeting with the school superintendent. Because it was brought up at the last council meeting, that we should let Steel Valley run the field. And I don't think we should give up our field. I think we should have the ability to run our own municipal fields, been Mon Hall's field for as long as Mon Hall's been here. And for us to say, "Let's let Steel Valley run the field," or "Let's give the field to Steel Valley," I think that's terrible. So, um, I'm just making that statement because what you're saying is, is there any, I think that maybe there is a lot of. Yeah, Mr. Lewis is orchestrating, obviously, where's that person is? I don't know. I mean, all these plans, somebody's orchestrating. You know, they can answer these questions.
But, no, no, we didn't pay for the renovations.
It's Steel Mon Hall's field.
Well, I know.
It's our field.
Right, the millions came not for.
Mr. Campbell paid for the field renovations. Correct, and in the contract that we have, we're obligated to allow the school, first preference, to use the field. There's no problem there. The problem comes in when we have a schedule and the schedule's there, and there's a conflict. Now, Steel Valley wants to use the field, and someone else is on the field. So they don't have the right to just throw them off the field. It's already, there's a schedule. Keep the field scheduled, right? Or you feel we just throw the other team off the field, it's our field.
No, but Steel Valley needs to say so.
They do, we sit down, we fill out a schedule, right? Go through it here, we're just scheduled, we're the schedule.
There's some objections at Mon Hall running it, and some of the renters charge to Chatham University. Some of the fees are pretty low there, you know.
Well, maybe they are too low.
Well, but if Mon Hall does take it, okay, they're right, it's our field. We've gotta pay for maintenance, so maybe having a partner for maintenance in Steel Valley would, could help.
Well, they can, they can help.
Well, no, I mean, if you're gonna pay money, if they're gonna continue to pay money, they're gonna wanna have some say also.
They have all the say.
Well, you just said it's Mon Hall's field.
It is Mon Hall's, but don't you understand about that?
What's that?
But don't you understand about that?
Well, you want it to be Mon Hall's field.
It is Mon Hall's.
Okay, it is, but now who's gonna pay for the other?
Mon Hall's.
Okay.
And you said it wouldn't be bad if we had a partner. And I said, "It would be bad. Steel Valley, the partner, I'm gonna help us pay for renovations." They're first in line with every client.
You show your gift of love, I know that, that's your that.
Well, brother.
Wow.
Go ahead, Rob.
You know, the field we want, that's the statement also, Rick and I both.
Right.
The thing is, what we would like to do, and we're discussing with the school district board, I have a lot of fruit on here, but what I would like to do is, ten to twelve years, this turf's gonna need replaced. Hey, Steel Valley, can you come in to help us when this turf could need replaced? That turf can be replaced, but the problem is, there are a million dollars. Replace that, some whole turf from that hill. So that's part of the strategy, meeting with them, that we've gotta keep it Mon Hall's field.
Right.
And not the schools.
Right.
Is there any thought now that we realize that the field will need to be turned, redone in ten years, so that we have a certain amount of money that's coming in from the rentals from the colleges, whoever's banked or goes into, you know, the savings account, anticipating that?
There is supposed to be an account, but that's being done now. But honestly, they probably aren't charging enough money.
Well, they probably do, they'll get away with that.
Right. Exactly. And honestly, I think that that needs to be looked at very, very seriously.
You don't have any resources.
Council determines.
You can't use our resources to get that much money.
Mon Hall, the council determines the fees, the council determines who runs the field. And I certainly think, and this is my opinion, I didn't wanna say this, but I think that the, um, the Borough, Athletic. Or what's their, what's their, their? Recreation Board should be doing that. I don't think the Borough Office should be doing that. I think the Rec Board, we have a Rec Board. I think they should be in charge of the field. They're all residents of the town. They should set the schedule up, and they should run it, and let it be done. And they should set, they should recommend the fees that were brought to the council and say, "Hey, this is what we should be getting for the field." And not, not just Borough Secretary in there playing numbers and run, and filling out. The people of the town should run the field, not a secretary back there. Because she can't do it, she's having trouble doing it.
I was on the original Park and Rec Board, and every recommendation we made to council or to the Borough Manager was just ignored. And I eventually retired because we just, they did everything on their own without any guidance from the Rec Board.
So, I didn't wanna bring that out, I didn't wanna talk about that, but I feel that that's the way it should be run.
So here's my thing. We keep going through this cycle where the state, or the Borough Council's doing things, and we're always running out of that. And if our only big horse is to probe and try to get new bodies in, then we need to have more transparent information about, well, the election cycle is your council. When are people coming off, so that we can be aware that there's opportunities for new people? And who's gonna be on ballot? Because I feel like there's no complication around election day. And I don't find out who's coming in or off the council until I show up in the poll and I bring it out, and I'm, "Oh, really, okay." So is there some way that we, as citizens, can gather that information and make it available to the neighborhood, so that we can say to people, "If you don't like the choices that have been made so far, these are the new people that are running, and if you consider one of these options and vote out some of the current options, because you have some different voices, these are different ideas in terms of managing our town."
I think that's a wonderful idea, and believe me, I've heard several people run for council this past election. What you have to do is you have to know when the dates are to be filed. And that's through the County, that's through the Alghene County Election Board. You can look it right up on the computer, and it'll tell you the first day to file your ballots, the last day to file your ballots is this day. You have to fill signatures out for absentee ballots, per se, I'm sorry. That reminds me, I did bring absentee ballots here. If anyone needs an absentee ballot, they're up on the front wooden desk up there in case anyone needs one. But that's all public knowledge from the County Election Board, okay?
Awesome thinking. There are two things. One, like, if you can bring people into the town, show them around, so, I know we do that a lot, the town, you show them the library, and people with it. And you look at the Borough Building, and you look at Willis. There's no comparison between the two.
We know that.
You know, if you look at the Borough Building, and some people say, "Oh, it's old." So is the Cathedral Learn, so is the Coliseum, it's fine, they all have it. They don't get rid of it, you know? So I think that's important to remember. And then secondly, what happens to the ambulance? There's no one mentioning.
The ambulance is not being addressed, is not being changed. The ambulance service is there. I, as far as I know, it's supposed to stay there. And I invite the ambulance to come to the council meetings every month. They should come, give us a report, tell us hello, we're here. They're welcome to come, tell Dennis that I invite them. I want them to be part of the meetings, they should be there.
So is anybody on this House, with the Batch Building right now? Because TK, the architect, is also the architect. Coincidentally, with the Batch Building that's being constructed, and that's to do with the municipal building, is there?
As far as I know, they've gone back to the drawing board, and they had to redesign their drawings for some reason. I don't know what that reason is. I have to think that they don't have enough partner there, to be honest with you, but I don't know, because looking at the drawing, the footprint, where they had six spots or seven spots there, I don't know what the real question was there, but I know that it was gone back to the drawing board, so that's all I know right now. Just then, answer this gentleman's idea. There is a P A code that regulates what the council can't do. But it's actually tied away. If you go down to chapter fourteen, subsection fourteen oh two, subtitle A, that's the regulation for the bids. So that's what they have to follow throughout the bidding process. So, that being said, does anyone, can I, can we split the Willis Center for right now?
What is the Borough of Willis Center, how much was it?
The Willis Center was given, taken as a gift. Didn't cost us any.
It's costing a horrible lot.
Well, that was, that was a, that was a condition of the gift, that if we took the building, that we would build that parking lot up above where the water tower was.
If it was a gift, why don't they sell the gift? Use that money to enhance the Borough.
I thought that, I thought that myself. Is that you, Randy? Right. So one thing I wanna go over with everyone here, quickly, is the statement from our engineer about the waterfront property, which is coming back into the, into the subject of questioning here. It was brought up by him, and I think it's a lead into selling the waterfront property. They had put it up for sale, and I'm sure everyone knows how I feel. The property was acquired for a part. It was taken by eminent domain. And I have, I have all the numbers of what it was taken for. It was taken from Junior Achievement. They wanted to give it to us. And the best way for us to acquire was through eminent domain. So, when this all came up, that they wanted to sell the property, I had talked to and found out that there had been an environmental study done on there. And I took that environmental study, and I brought it to the council meeting, and they looked at it. So, um, and in the environmental study, it showed one spot where there was a high lead content in the, in the whole seven and a half acres. So, now, K, is it Nuvo? Nuvo, they put in a proposal to buy the property for three hundred thousand dollars. And they had a study done as well. And in that study, they referred to the K U Resources study that was done. And they say there's one spot that they found that the lead levels were high. They were above the D E P levels of acceptability, one spot, seven and a half acres. And if you read through here, which I read through here pretty, pretty well, it basically says that they found that there is no health hazard for people to be using the property. And what they say is, if you have to excavate and remove ground from there, they're slagging the ground, and there could be high lead levels. Could be, they don't, they don't say that. They drilled five testites, K U drilled twelve testites, I believe, in two thousand fourteen. So, they did their study in December last year, eighteen. I read, I read a lot of this, and for them to come out and say, for our engineer to come out and say that that property is worthless and is contaminated, is absolutely puppy push. So, I have the report, it's here. If anyone wants to brief, read through it, you're welcome to do that later. But, but I did read it, and I believe it's, I believe, this was supposed to be put online for us. It was never put online for us. Neither was the asbestos study for the Borough Building. That was supposed to be put online for us, it never happened. This stuff should all be public knowledge. It's brought up at meetings, this stuff's been brought up at meetings about the asbestos levels. All this stuff should be online for everyone to read, and it's not. This is not being, forthright, this is not being, what's the word called? What's that word called?
Transparency.
It's not transparency. I wanna go over, I'm glad we went over that. I wanna go over just one other thing, and then if anyone else has anything they wanna bring up, they can bring it up. So, this is just a localized drawing here of the rezoning of Mon Hall. I think it's Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh Avenue, down here. East Eleventh Avenue.
Property spacing tenth.
Okay? So, I'll put this up on the board here. Mr. Cannon's not here. I searched my home for my zoning, but I couldn't find it, so I apologize. But in a nutshell, they wanna make this a business zone down here. B two, I'm sorry, this is B two nine. They wanna transform this, this here, you're correct. You're right, it is, it's only this one side. But they wanna make these areas business zoning down there. And at the meeting that we had, the people came to the meeting, and they were in favor of a business zone. So, it was turned down. My thought on this matter is, a business zoning allows businesses to come in. And this area here is never going to be launched. There's not parking there, there's not wide streets. It's not a business district. It's a residential district with mixed-use buildings in there. It's not a commercial district with commercial buildings and residential living space above. It doesn't have any of that. Now, Eighth Avenue has that, and that is the business district. And to enhance this into a totally business district is far-fetched because the people here are protected by a residential zoning, not a commercial zoning. If you have a commercial zoning, you're not protected by a residential zoning. And there's a lot of building setbacks that are, that come into play with that. You have a building, if they made this a business or a B area, they can build it basically pretty much up to their property lines, in most cases. Not all, but in most. So that requirement alone protects the residential people living here because it's an R two and R three, per se, there. And I wanted to bring this up because I know that the people who live down here, the library's here, I mean, it's involved, is part of the area. The library is a beneficial part of the borough. It's a hub for this area. We can't let that fail. But we can't let the character of our residential town here be swallowed up by business zonings where people build all the way out to their property lines. They intrude on families living here. And the families that are living here should have the priority to say, hey, we live here, this is our own neighborhood, we don't want businesses here. It would be different if there were mixed businesses there already, but there are none. Now, if you go down the building way, there was one business that was put in here. That was put in seven years ago, maybe, six years ago. They made this street here, B2, they're the only business that's been there. And that's part of the old church that was there. The Italian sandwiches. So, I'm a pro-business person. I'm in my own business, I work for business people, I'm a pro-business person. If I saw this thing made into a Lawrenceville, I would be all 100% for it. But this will never be Lawrenceville. The streets don't accommodate Lawrenceville streets. The homes down there are residential homes. We want to protect them. We do not want to have, you know, multi, multi-family units moving in here where you have, you know, chaos, commercial chaos. We don't want that. Anyone like to say anything?
What's the status of this currently? Because at the last hearing, it seemed like there was a pretty good consensus among both the council and the public that a multifamily dwelling, so essentially, this was brought about because Ascension School was trying to sell it. It's for this one business in this residential history. And so the compromise was, they could sell potentially, if it was zoned as allowing apartments instead of R1, I think it would be R2 or R3.
Right.
And it seemed like everyone was pretty much on board with that. So is the rezoning to business being discussed again amongst the council?
Not amongst the council, but I went to the zoning hearing, I went to the planning commission, and they were talking about business there again. And the people don't want business there. So, that was over two months ago, that hearing itself, that you're talking about. I challenged council to have another hearing, have a special hearing for this area. That's what was going to happen. And it was going to be an off-the-record, sit-down talk session where nothing's going to come about it, let's talk this out, manage this out. Am I correct in saying?
Yes, we were told that there would be a meeting. We all put our names down, and we were told we would be contacted and have a schedule.
That's why I want to bring this up, because I don't want you to think that I forgot about it. And I don't, I want the borough to know that the people don't want that, and they need to resolve this. Because when I walk into a meeting, and they're talking about making it a business down there, and talking about how it's going to be, it could be like Lawrenceville. Lawrenceville, they put jams on it. This will never be Lawrenceville. There's residential homes there. I'm sorry, there are apartment houses there, but there's residential homes there too. Steve?
What about the old St. Michael's Church? Isn't there a business in that?
There is, that's what we're talking about, right here. They put the sandwich shop in. That's the only one that was done there. Basically, that was changed so that they could do that. Basically, and that was done seven years ago.
And the church is actually a business.
Well, the church itself is a business there, but you're correct. That's what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but that might be correct, because previously, I thought it was supposed to be a 10, not 11. The library was never included. Am I mistaken?
I don't know, do I just grab another chance?
You're right that the library wasn't one of the zoning. No, it was always proposed that it would be the south side tonight, the north side of 10, and the south side of 10.
Yeah.
And the library, yeah.
The senior lady who placed this, her society is not part of that. For some reason, it looks to me like it's not so legal.
Well, they wrote that it's all but the council's front line tent.
If you look at the checker, if you look at the checker signs here, it says that's the proposed rezoning of R1. The word of the checker line is, is that, that was the proposed change?
It's the front, front of the tent.
So, and my feeling is that it should stay a residential zoning. Whether or how that zoning changes is certainly up to the community. It's not up to one person, or it should be up to council either. It should be a meeting involved residents and talked about. So, I briefly wanted to bring this up, just so if anyone wanted to know. And typically, this, if this, Jen, you may be able to help me a little bit better. So, if this zoning had passed, and this was all made commercial here, where's the school at? Next to it? It's down here, it's right here. So this school would have been business. Propel School would have been all zone business, and they could have built, got all the
That's 430, that's the essentials.
Right. So, I just attended the meeting at the zoning hearing for it. And it was brought into question, they lost, they want to build an addition on to the school, and they want to take their parking lot and put the addition on there. And basically, they're taking parking away, and they're putting some parking back in here. But they're changing that area right there. This person that lives in 601, you know, they're approaching on her home, and they're talking about, oh, we're just going to put parking, we're going to put our truck, we're going to put our truck parking lot. Our delivery truck's going to come right next to her house. I said, oh wow, that's really going to be nice. And we sit in her yard drinking martinis, and that delivery truck's going to come in there parked there. I mean, there has to be a little give and go there. So, I think if you keep it a residential zoning, I think it protects the people a little bit better. Go ahead, Jen.
I mean, a larger concern, I think, is just that we, look, this neighborhood is not what it was originally. It's changed. So now we have, you know, I love the library, the music hall. There's been no plan for like parking to accommodate the Druski entertainment lineup. I love that people know about our neighborhood. Some people know just because of that. But if any of you live in this area, I come home at night from work, and then I have to walk two to three blocks, there's shootings down here. I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel safe in my own neighborhood, and I don't understand why, you know, the library, Druski, whoever, isn't being asked to look at, who's interpreting that code to say this is required parking? Because the same thing's coming up with Propel. Who tells them you can take up more parking spaces out on 11th Street? Anybody that lives like up through, I don't know about 14th, but
They do. I think I've all the way, uh, believed on 13th. That we had shooting two rows down, two streets down, Sunday night.
Honestly, they blew the opportunity. They could have bought that parking lot right there adjacent here, and they had a big parking lot there. And it didn't happen. Now that they have the residential on there.
So, what I find problematic is that we have folks that are sitting, you know, Borough Manager, Code Enforcement Officer, and they're all like talking about being grandfathered into things, which I don't think actually exists. I don't feel protected. If this zoning gets changed, I was assured that, don't worry, you won't have to sell to a business, you could sell to another resident. I don't believe it. Who's interpreting the code? Is it being enforced? There's no fire lane in front of Propel School, because no one's painted the lines down here in 20 years.
I drove by today. It is parking lot, the park bumper, bumper, bumpers all the way through. Both sides of the street. I thought, what's going on here? Is it that way every day?
Every day.
Every day?
That's terrible. I mean, that's
And I just, it's almost to God, like even coming up in the summertime to the hearings and some of the other ancillary meetings, we have council folks who have absolutely no idea, like the solicitor had no idea that this library fronts on 10.
Yeah.
How are you paying a solicitor who doesn't know that much about being the biggest
I can only present so much, and I can only fight so many different battles, but I
And it's very disheartening to know that votes are being made at 10 o'clock at night that affect us so deeply, and there's no members.
I agree. So, I, there's got to be some sort of an answer. I don't know what the answer may be. I don't know where we can get more parking here now. At this time and in our lives, there's nothing available. The only real area is parks. The only area is parks. Pay it, pay it.
Pay something on parking.
Propel Homes were the old high school used to be.
I believe they did.
And why can't they have their teachers park?
They should.
Put some asphalt down on the upper level.
I know, it's still, they have bees up there, so they have
And they also have the watch, the regular watch, where the high school was, and it's all about
That's about the law.
Yeah, I'm curious.
The law, why you can develop or the area, you should be promising, saving your area for any in a while.
Okay, well, if it were, I guess, if something's, like if it's locked and it's sold.
No, he's an entrepreneur, he's increased the value of the street already. Bringing in people that work very hard for hours and hours and hours of it. Send their kids to school in my area, where there was, where there's, where my kids can walk down the street. So I'm more than happy to have them buy the lot down the street.
But if those own the lot, why can't they be pushed to use their lot for the parking? And I think that the community, their property, it's kind of their parking address. So I'm not going to pay this.
So
Mayor, what else do they
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you as a mayor, where do we go for this type of, like, the website? I've never asked, Dave.
The website is on, a lot of meetings, right? I mean, the only thing, the only thing you can do is go to the meetings. Come to the meetings and get all the attendance speak, and tell council that you have problems here. And that, you know, and then, I don't know what the answer really is. It's just what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. You know, the music's involved, has, what, 300?
A thousand seats. They're supposed to have 300, 300 seats.
So, I mean, I don't know what that answer is.
That's why it's a business.
So
That's great.
Anyone else have anything else that they'd like to bring up? If I can help, the law can answer, so we'd be glad to answer.
Um, there's a problem with, you know, with classing by their homes. Like, isn't there anything that we can do to zone out as resident parking in front of their homes so they can park in front of their houses?
It could be that.
So that they don't have to walk to walk.
That could be done.
And then, and I love the library, and it's great that we brought in the music and entertainment and helped have this beautiful building done. But there's money that comes into that, is there, is there a benefit on it, like you say?
Maybe.
This building needs to get a parking lot, buy this land, but it's
Or they have a parking lot and have a shuttle service to the
Right. I mean, I just, if you have good neighbors, yes, you do want this, and want this building to stay alive.
Or maybe, maybe they can work a deal out with someone on 8th Avenue, one of the businesses down there, they could lease spots down there too. Like, some of them, parking lots are just empty all the time, there's no one there.
It seems like code enforcement is doing, like, does it even exist around here? You see, how is it being thrown out, nobody's
Oh, there's guardrails in the alleys, the alleys are atrocious. I mean, we could go on for hours about other things that need to be done versus moving out of those, well, a little time. That's not what this meeting is about. But if someone has a problem with an alley, go to two alleys down, it's horrendous down there. Between 8th and 9th Avenue, Boon Lane, I think it's called, it's terrible, garbage alley.
Charles told us between 12, between 4 and Marbury.
Absolutely.
Right?
I know, I drive all the way around. I know.
Yeah, he does, and more police officers. Okay, please.
We're hiring two tomorrow.
Well, we need two more than that.
And
So, let me, I, I, let me force this, let me, it's done, it's prepared this meeting. Let me explain something to you. And I think, I'll go out online and say that the code enforcement, he answers to the building Borough Manager. He works under his direction. If you go through the columns, he works under, who, the code enforcement officer works under the Borough Manager. He should not work under the Borough Manager. He should work under the mayor. The mayor is in charge of enforcing the ordinances of Munn Hall, not the Borough Manager. I am, I am in charge of that. He should work under me at my direction, but he does not. He answers to me, I can call him and say, hey, and I do call him, call him Thomas Condon, hey, there's garbage over here, this is out of place. But really, he should answer to me, and then we should bring it to council. That's my feeling. And I really don't, didn't want to say that, but that's how I don't feel about it.
I think, I think everybody's here because I go to the council meetings. Well, we all have to understand this, the people that are making the decisions for us down the road, they're going to put us in debt for the next 20 years, we're going to be bomb on. We all need to start looking at who are we going to put in for place. And please come to the meeting, please make your voices sound, this is only going to get changed. So thank you for coming tonight.
Anyone else?
Anything that could be done about this infrastructure?
These streets?
These streets, yes.
That's pretty disident, man.
And some people drive, I got your finding from council that it's going to be started at the end of September, beginning of October. I held it a record myself two and a half weeks ago. They tell me the end of September, beginning of October. I hear again that they're starting on the 14th. It's still not started, and I still have six inch bottles in front of my house, and I have a trailer tire on my lawn. So I don't know when this, when this launch actually going to be started. There's going to be a serious accident, and then somebody's going to know my
In all of them, there's pre-residency or something right now, and they're not happy about it. And the main street, right, the main street, Virginia Avenue, the lightest, it's horrible. Where, it's terrible.
The patrol, the traffic, all the way in, we used to have, that's in the morning. They have, and now, there is no such thing on that street. Even the Borough Manager, who had my
Are you versus her? She had brought up the trouble, and they, they, the two double wheels line, they have to have down there, have a road to cut these down, and you're all, you're all on.
Okay, but, but I heard from my mom, she shared the case with me, because Borough Line was 30 yards from 4, and my mom, she wanted for $2,500, they gave the whole first street back.
I bought it off my mom.
To show off. I know. 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 I know.
And, and I got, I can't say, I can't say, ask, and I can't answer why, but I brought it up on council floor, I said, listen, Homestead is going to pay for Forest Street, let's do it with them, and let's be done with it, and we'll, it'll be done, and they, they chose on to do it.
Yeah, that's not true, that's not true, their answer was, Homestead bought it in France, to get their spot paid, Monholme would have to pay for it, and it isn't on their list for that year.
Who cares? All, all that neighbor was the answer.
I understand.
I can do it, done.
That's why that's so, you know, I want to take it all, I'll, I'll take all of that. That's, that's not what we're doing, that's not what we're doing, that's not what we're doing, that's not what we're doing. Stay with all of us, now, on Main Street, I'm on the right side of the road, person coming, he goes to me, over to my side, you answer, he's involved.
There's no line, there's a say...
So, I'm on the left side of the road, there's no line. Where's my voice, I can't relax.
I think...
And I might have to go to the music picture, my, yes, please, please, come out and make...
I think you should come to the council meeting and bring this up again.
Or, you want to, you want to, you should have to submit what you want to say, and if you don't, if they don't want to hear you, get tossed out.
Oh, no.
No, they're not changing. No, they're not, or if they don't want to hear you, which you...
If you have the issue, and this goes to every councilman, if there's a problem that we need to address, please come to the meeting, you're not going to be turned out, and we'll testify to that. We'll even stay after the meetings, if you're not on these, I'm pretty much sort of thinking we stay after the meeting and take, but, I don't think that would be necessary for that, but I...
I understand that, I understand that.
So, Mark brought this up to me about the land, the land of, at the, at the waterfront property, they drilled down 18 and a half feet, and they hit the lid down there, the only spot on the waterfront, 18 and a half feet, thank you, Mark. Nobody has baseballs down there, if it's done wrongly, that's where you're going to be counted, where that drill hole, sign of being one is, they found 11, two feet, that makes up the perimeter, and then, basically, from two feet, the whole thing down 18 and a half feet was cleaned, and then they hit it again at 18 and a half feet deep, nobody's going to excavate 18 and a half feet in, in the waterfront for anything.
Yeah. Mayor, is this...
Look at the river!
So, seven point five acres of land down by the waterfront, is that on the potential sales block again?
I, I, I don't know that, but, but, at the last meeting, they were, they, their engineer came out and made a statement, and other councilmen spoke in, in other meetings, and I think that they're leading towards that.
So there was the franchise, I know this was a long time ago, but that was built in a maybe $150,000 for 7.5 acres of the municipality's land.
Well, first, it was $75,000.
Yeah, because we had to kind of deal with it.
And I think it went to $125,000.
Okay.
On watching, but irregardless, you know...
But it's assessed by a county, I think, you guys have heard of any, like, buying property, lower than how it assessed, yeah, think of your house, what the asset value is, think of what it's selling for.
I forget what it was assessed at.
But it was assessed, 7.5.
It was, who you buy it at. I forget how much it was back when, um, J.A. bought it, I think it was $700,000 acres, some, that's a number, I don't know, I forget the number, it was launched, that property should be worth about $500,000.
To have a tie.
I don't want to be that.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, if anybody would like to watch the, the video, Dave's video, and that's another thing, Monholme will not film their meetings, the only reason that we have a record of what happens on the meetings is because Dave, he, he volunteers his time and also his equipment, you can't get anything off the website, if it were up to them, nobody wants anything public, but if you watch Dave's video from the last meeting, R., Monholme's engineer sat there for 15 minutes, and misrepresented what the study was, why Noco or whoever they have sat on that property for the last 15 months in its development, and he basically said, that property is worthless, and I think there's some interior movement like there was before, where they have someone in mind, they want to give this property to, and it doesn't matter how much of us talk here, if we don't replace the people on council that are selling a sound train, they're going to keep on doing it, and the waterfront property is another example, if you read the reports, but they won't put it on the website, there's nothing wrong with that property, just like the rest of the property down there, but if you listen and go back to what the engineer said, he said that property is basically worthless, we should probably just give it away to somebody, and that's what's going to happen, just by putting all these other things that are just done, and those doors go to public discussion, these people need to be removed, and we need people working for the betterment of our borough, instead of the betterment of themselves and your friends.
Well, I can't keep her quiet. Her engineer did the same thing with Summer Field Drive, disagreed with me, it's never been one Summer Field Drive to evaluate it, said, you know, a three and a half inch milling event was sufficient, but he never, he, he, he never saw the street when the, yes, company was up there sewing down through 10 inches of dirt and not concrete base.
They don't want us to know, that's why, um, it's so embarrassing, anybody that knows, may, goes right on, uh, I don't drink to a whole turn of the team.
Ray, Ray, would you stand up, please, Ray, if you stand up, just stand up, just turn around, I don't think, just turn around, don't be a kid, huh? Hey, this is great, anyone get the lesson?
I would do that, I have one in leaves, the whole per year, I, I went because I heard about that seven and a half acres, and I, I honestly thought, the camera's still on for 75,000. The first meeting, I did stand up and said, I'd like to talk, are you on the agenda? You gotta be, you gotta, it's a clever way, okay, so they didn't talk, but, I did go, sorry, I'm going to respond, and I talked every minute, and God goes around the halls because he is your president, and he does the laundry, talk every minute, and he doesn't know what I'm doing, and you have to submit your form, Roger Bill, to go in the day before, because you just, you have issues, like, right now, tomorrow night's meeting, you cannot walk in tomorrow night and expect to talk, unless it's, you can't win, there's no, and, 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 well, I'll say, I'll stay at the meeting, the meeting's adjourned, the camera is off, I'm sorry, that is not a public meeting in my house, okay? I, after seeing what happened last month, after two, almost three hours, there was no discussion on this whole, seven versus the, um, part of 10, for, for the bar building, there was no, nothing on the agenda, and all of a sudden, at the end of the night, councilman moves, walking to, hits on the video, I make a motion, we accept it, all of a sudden, and all of a sudden, I, 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 there are five eyes, Mr. Falls, did not vote, and his words, I didn't know he was supposed to, it's not on the agenda, well, if you think he was shocked, you shouldn't see all the questions prepared.
I vote from, I vote either from all the questions.
That's right, you didn't vote, okay, and we sit here with a smoke there, but the fact remains, five people voted, and they're sitting on our council right now, and I don't know how, whenever asked, back in April, when they were running, the word transparency was up there, but when you ask at these meetings, and I ask every month, the question we want to throw up about the, uh, painting of Main Street, they look at you like you've got seven headaches, I'm like, we did have paintings, R., they get all frustrated, sound, and I don't know, you know, we have panels on Main Street, whatever the cessment asks, those panels work, there are many, I'm going to have to answer this, okay, why people I ever ask, why, I don't know, I said, are they all working? And everybody who says, tell you, no, okay, well, how many are there? Six, okay, well, we're going to get the answer, all we heard after three months before that was, we have $1.2 million access, we didn't pay maps, money of resource, pay them, we have $1.2 million, and we don't have mine, we don't have, we don't have the cameras here, every month, guys, I ask the stupid question, is that the cameras fixed yet? I think this is eight, eight months ago, for the last two months, we have not had a finance needed, I don't know how you run a borough when you don't have finances, I'm speaking for me, Ray, after I had, had the last one, I have to, I'm saying, I need to be running for council, like, I need this, because I need children, parents, I need to be proud in my vision, but after seeing the torn up, I'm like, I'm done, I'm not going to sit there and just ask, I hope to be up there next year, in two months, or whatever, I hope to, I can sit there, because you are all going in there with torn up, there are so many questions in there, in the building, I'm going to, go all the way there, and then anybody else will say, I'm with Tom Heath, tell us what your feelings, you're the taxpayers, they're supposed to represent us. I would, 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 for 600 people who voted up on Main Street for the brush shop, we're down to 300, I know that this people did vote, when I went to run for people back in the home mail, this is what I was told, Ray, it doesn't matter if you run, and not me, if they run, nobody's, nobody's going to get the hit, well, people, I'm having to tell you, there sits everyone, and there sits Mark Fowden, and they need the system.
Yeah.
Anyway, I thought you just need it, people don't vote because I think it doesn't matter, and I've been told that, Ray, I have to totally agree, they're supposed to, the government said it does, and I don't think it's true, I think they didn't make the decisions, they don't have to do it all for you, for you, if you don't care, so no one counts, and go on in and walk in, go find him to me, and this is why we weren't asked, what are you doing here? Let me see what's going on, why? You know what, this is wrong, we need change, I would do my very best, guys, and I know these guys will, and I'm going to stay, but, I'm just saying, if you care, please work for him, get to this meeting, stand up, I know I can't really snore, my mouth is as dry as a butter right now, and my heart is racing, I can imagine my face looks like, I don't, you can't believe it, it was, who won there?
Your face, your face is cut.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Kevin?
If you don't know me, I'm Kevin Ondo, I, I'm a councilman elect, running, obviously, for, on November 5th, I've been going to the council meetings and lawful testifying, Rick, I've been going to council meetings for a long time, I've been involved on a planning commission for a long time, I'm also a member of the, uh, Vegas Department with Mr. Felton, um, everything was brought up for tonight, Rick and I will be discussing, I know I discussed it, the janitor, my heart problem, my, my thing, and stuff like that, um, I'm just going to make it short and sweet, as a member of the planning commission, when they came in and they wanted to redo that church to make it into a school, which is what was called, to me, that's what I heard, a school, if you're going to think church, which was a nonprofit organization, and you were going to make it into a school, which is a nonprofit organization, why in love saying that you have to change the zoning, there's no reason, am I right, Jen? So, it was brought up at the council, can I speak up to Rick? It was brought up at the council meeting, that I was the one who wanted, that was, that voted unanimously to change the zoning, it was brought up by a council member who called me out, correct me if I'm wrong, that I went in to demand this vote, because what I heard was a school, I didn't hear it was a profitable organization, so, I sat, I stood up at the council meeting and said, I was misled, okay, and I apologize, Jen, that's what it out. I remember when we first went into the sale of the, uh, seven and a half acres of waterfront, and I stood up at the meeting and I said, you can be 65,000, 67,000?
75,000.
75,000 dollars, I said, that property down there is worth billions, I had a council member say, for you, I stood, correct me if I'm wrong, say, a million, are you crazy? You're lucky you're getting what you're getting, wait a minute, wait a minute, you keep my house in Monholme for $75,000, let alone seven and a half acres, and one, that waterfront, so that's total BS, um, most of you, if you know me, I went door to door with Ray, I went, there's quite a prick, and my platform was to say, the bar building, if I misled you, I apologize, because I am still dead set against moving into the Little Center.
Little Center.
Little Center, okay, I am so against that, and the reason I'm against it is, if somebody out of state, out of town, starts and says, hey, if you tell me how to get to this point in town, or try out this road, you'll see our bar building, which you can't miss, make a right or a left, go here, go there, go there, try doing that with the Little Center, hey, right up this road, you might see that building, sitting on the right or left, it's, you might, you might see it, our building, our bar building, and I don't know if you're aware of this, our bar building is one of six of that design in the country, one of six, Rick and I toured the one in, sure, square, I thought it was toward up, sure, smaller buildings, the exact same thing, but smaller than ours, everything that they need for that town is in that building, what's wrong with our building? 50% of our building is underutilized, the building itself has not been touched in the last 100 years, like Rick says, go pay, whatever, nothing has been done to that building, my thing was, and I, and I spoke to people, I told my support, I says, to jump into the Little Center, we have to jump into it right after it's completion, if we deal with our bar building, we can do a little bit next year, and then a little bit the year after that, and so on and so on, until we get what we want, because this is not town, and that's our bar building, so again, I apologize about misled you, but I have still, I want our, our term of verbal, I don't want to go to the Little Center, if, if I say, well, before the Little Center is, is a little off color, off key, the Little Center was a building for death, do you agree?
Yes.
No matter what you do, no matter how you fix it, it will be a nursing facility, and you can't put lipstick on a baby.
Is that for eighteen years?
Are they?
Is that for eighteen years?
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right, so, and you know what's really funny is, like, Rick, Ian's girlfriend, White, right, she spoke up, I was getting, I just know that here, don't say that, I have to say something, because I am running for council, and I'm going to go on record right now, that I, I am proud... And I'm gonna go on record right now that I, I am proud to run with Mr. I and Mr. Fallon. And I hope everybody finds it in your heart, to think about what's happening in this borough, to think about what could happen in this borough or what we could change. Because I'm running for the, well, hopefully, council. But I'm also a resident and I am also a taxpayer. So that's the way I'm going into this, that's the way I'm looking at things. And again, anybody, in fact, I'm running for Indian, I have big thoughts on my, I think, what about this, what about this, what about? I'm running. But anyway, I didn't want to turn this into a political thing. I just wanted to explain the situations that I have been involved in. And Rick and I, we talk every day, three, four, five times a day about different stuff. I'm against changing the zoning, uh, nineteen, ten, eleven, twelve, whatever it might be. I'm against the Little Center. I've got no record to say that because it is on film. I'm against the Little Center. And I'm definitely against it because no option is even given for that waterfront property. Years past, I coached, if, if anybody here remembers, I coached Phil Deli-Hockey. I coached the Andrew Pennants, I coached California versus hockey. I said, I'll go down and I'll talk to pendulum organization to see if we can get the pendulums to come in and do something about waterfront, just as a, as an idea. Let them come into the building. It would benefit all of us, it would benefit all the kids in this area. Here's the thing, you, you put an IT guy or an indoor soccer or, or, or that coffee, you're bringing people in from way out there, from way out there. They come in here, they use the facility. Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna take their family and get something to eat. So now our business is down there, our profit, profit even better. Plus, you hire local people to work those facilities down there. So we get seven and a half acres, that's more than enough right now to do whatever you wanna do. Again, you vote, might be a great organization. They're gonna put a storage unit. How many storage units? Storage units, we have now, we're empty. We're gonna go and put more storage units. Anywhere you go, there's a storage unit. You throw a stone in any direction, there's a storage unit. We need another storage unit.
I don't think that was over the top of plan.
Anyway, but it, but it was mentioned. So why don't we do something where we could use and people from the surrounding areas could use? And now they're talking about the ball field, Westfield. I'm sorry, uh, William Campbell's probably rolling over in his grave because leaving up to the school board to do whatever, they're not gonna kick you. If anybody's on the school board, I all the time, it's big enough. They're not gonna kick you to die to redo that field. You know the responsibility it's gonna be? Hours, hours. So rent it out if we, if we need to increase the rent on that thing. So we can, these colleges got money, but they can, they can burn. Rent the field out, set up a schedule, still valid, I'm sorry, but here's the schedule. You have to go, you have to go with what the schedule says.
We get much better. We get, have the schedule set.
Absolutely. Rent it out, raise the rent, do whatever you gotta do because I'm talking about when it comes to times, a million. I think it was yesterday, now it's like a million dollar problem, right? It's a problem. A million dollars to do the, the Astro turf now? It's only good for ten years. If you replace it, you're talking one point two, one point three million. Hey, I'll tell you what, if any of you got one point two, one point three, in fact, give me a million. I'll invest it for you, what, I'm not even, we need the, uh, Astro turf. But anyway, I just wanted to get out of, I wanted to speak, I'm sorry if I affected anybody, but again, it is an order of mine to be with Mark and with Ray D. So if mine is your mark on November fifth, thank you, Mark.
But, but the funny thing about the field is they, the concessions did, something needs to be worked out with that concession. I told them before we had to bet about the previous year's operating. But I'm not, though, like, and I didn't want to come down, like, because I just think this is my duty as a councilman to be here.
So on that, I think I'm gonna end the, end the meeting unless anybody has something to say. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did want to talk about the cemetery. I forgot about it. The cemetery is, as you can see, has really made a big transfer, transformation. And we have a couple of board members here from the cemetery. Mark Fallon has been, it's been very instrumental. And so has John, John Johnson, he's a board member. Stand up. This is Corey Pox. We, we have so much to thank. These two guys especially because they have put in the effort. I can't tell you how much work they have done. We are now a viable organization with a tax ID number. So we're gonna start moving forward and start trying to raise some venues of mine and try to start building the cemetery back. So guys, if you wanna say anything about the cemetery, go ahead. Before you go, quick, quick.
Uh, I just wanna announce that we bought a grant from the Campbell Foundation. Uh, it's a grant that's gonna enable us to create a GIS map of all the graves so you can just go on your phone and type in your name on the grave, it'll show you where it's at. It's gonna take a while to do that, but we do have money now. Take that project and to, to two guys, a lot of the, the writers. Most of our town should, historical site originally started a year ago. And hopefully, Daniel Ram's here, there's Paul here, the library, but, uh, this is a house and shore there. Is that, I think that project, doesn't know about.
And David was on so much more for the cemetery as well.
If you can't buy a break. A record, yeah. No, David, I'm done. Hopefully we can keep this, uh, when they're coming up in the town. We're always taking donations and any volunteers, there are a number of volunteers besides Corey and myself this year. We've been counting for years and we're really thankful to them.
Absolutely. Hey, thanks for coming by.
Go away. He talked about donations and we are accepting donations for the cemetery. We need to go far along. You can, it's one donation to the cemetery. They got, it's a cemetery and sent it to nineteen, nineteen hundred? Last year. To, we're all about those other charities. So basically, the borough building, make a check out the Oakton Cemetery. They write up the cemetery for that, it should work.